And tonight on Final Development Plan Design Review, or Minor Amendments Are Final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight's will be referred to the City Council for final actions at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a zoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use, amendments or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall on our televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being telecast on CityLink and will be rebroadcast Friday at 7:00 PM, Saturday at 10:00 AM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening. Welcome to Carnegie Hall. Before we get started tonight, we would appreciate your help and participation in a small survey. We've got the form on the desk. As you leave this evening, your request, the Planning Commission is always looking for ways to improve and be of more benefit to the general public. There's a number of small, simple questions there that we would really appreciate your participation in. We're going to be conducting this for the next couple of months. We can't think of better people to work on this survey than the folks that come here this evening. That being said, I'd like to also introduce a substitute secretary for us. Some of you might or might know our good friend Connie. She has had some health issues for the last couple of months. Tamara is filling in for her tonight, and we want to thank you for the help. Commissioners, I would ask, she has not had an opportunity to meet and recognize everybody yet. If you'd be kind enough, if you make a motion or a second, if you'd be kind enough to identify yourself for Tamara, she would appreciate that. And if on any issue, if there were to be a no vote, she'd like you to also identify yourself when you place that vote. That being said, we will start this evening's meeting with the consent agenda items. Number one on the consent agenda is the approval of the June 6, 2012 meetings of the regular meeting. Number two are Platts. Number three is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls repealing subsection four of chapter 1559 306 of Appendix B of the zoning ordinance of said city. Number four is a rezone RS2 Residential District to the RC Recreation Conservation District for allowed uses at South Southeastern Avenue in East Stony Brook Trail. Number five is a rezone C2 General Commercial District to RD Residential District to reflect existing uses at 105 South Lavelt Avenue. Number six is a rezone C4 Planned Commercial District to the I1 Light Industrial District for allowed uses at 5204 and 5208 South Loop Place. Number seven is a rezone I1, which is Light Industrial District, to the RS2 Residential District to reflect existing uses at 2003 North Wayland Avenue. Number eight is a rezone AG Agricultural District to the Avera Plan Development District for future corporate campus at West 69th Street and South Louise Avenue. Number nine would be a major amendment to subareas A, B, and C, Foss Fields Plan Development District to revise the initial development plan at East 6th Street and North Powderhouse Road. Ten would be a preliminary subdivision plan for Foss Fields addition. Eleven, conditional use permit in the S Institutional District to allow student housing at 1904 South Grange Avenue. Twelve would be a conditional use permit in the S Institutional District to allow student housing at 1826 South Grange Avenue. Thirteen, a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow a daycare center at 2011 West 45th Street. Fourteen, a conditional use permit in the RD Residential District to allow construction of three-plux townhomes at West Madison Street and North Valley View Road. Fifteen, a special use permit in Subarea A, 57th Street West, Plan Development District to allow on-sale alcohol at 5023 South Louise Avenue. Sixteen, minor amendment to Subarea B, 69th and Louise Avenue Plan Development District to increase allowed freestanding sign height from six feet to 17 feet at 3720 West 69th Seventeen, minor amendment to Subarea G, Beetle Greenway Plan Development District to modify parking lot size and surfacing at 406 East 14th Street. Staff, would there be any changes on the consent agenda from staff's viewpoint?
Mr. Chairman, Jeffrey Schmidt, representing planning staff this evening. As was stated in the video and that you just went over, that's the consent agenda items. They meet the four criteria that we haven't had public involvement at this point. People haven't stated any opposition. They meet all their criteria. So you'll basically vote all them in with one vote, and then everybody will be able to leave this evening for items one through seventeen. One lady in the audience would like items number eleven and items twelve to be moved off the consent agenda and be moved to the regular agendas. So number eleven and twelve. So when you get to regular agenda, it'll be items eleven, twelve, and then items number eighteen. All the other items that you just went over will be voted on as one item, and anybody for those items, one through ten, thirteen, and beyond, will be voted on as one motion this evening.
Thank you, Jeff. Would there be anyone in the audience that would have any questions or like any item that I've read on the consent agenda moved to the regular agenda? If not, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda with items eleven and twelve moved to the regular Larson.
We have a motion. Would there be a second?
I will second that. Schmidt?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. If you were here for a consent agenda item, other than number eleven, twelve, it has been approved, and you are certainly welcome to stay, but you're not, no requirement to. And having said that, we'd sure appreciate you looking at that survey on your way out. We'll wait just a second here till the room clears. Could we have a motion for the regular agenda? Or have we already done that?
Mr. Chair, Gaspar recommends approval of regular agenda.
We have a motion to approve the regular agenda. Would there be a second?
Second by assertion.
All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. We will start with item number eleven.
Good evening. Item number eleven is a conditional use in the S Institutional District to allow student housing. The applicant for this is Augustana College. Augustana College is to the west of this project, and it's in a single-family residential district. Previously, this item came before you as a rezoning request, and it was recently rezoned at the City Council meeting in July. Now it is zoned S Institutional, and as part of that, they can have student housing in an S Institutional District. The property itself as a residential district is showing here. It's a single-family home with a one-stall garage and a parking pad, able to have two additional vehicles. The area around it, again, is basically Augustana College as a major institutional use. The applicant did notify the property owners within the 300 feet of this application. One of the adjacent property owners was notified, and she's here today to speak. And again, she was here at the rezoning request. She's not necessarily opposed to Augustana or the theme housing, but the student housing in general. Staff recommends approval of this conditional use.
Jeff, would it be appropriate to deal with eleven and twelve as one issue, or would you like to take those individually?
We can take them individually.
Very good. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address item number eleven?
I'm Lois Dravland, D-R-A-V-L-A-N-D. And the first thing I want to say is, you know, I've heard tonight so many people say we didn't have any calls on this. And I stopped at the house and took down the phone number and attempted to call the phone number that was on the sign. And I was, I got a recording that said, you know, this phone number has been disconnected. I then called what I thought was the proper city office, and once again, the lady told me that wasn't her responsibility to get the correct phone number on the sign. Rather, it was whoever had put the sign out. I really didn't think that was fair, you know, of the people that live down there. If you're going to go to all the trouble of putting out a sign, it would be real helpful if it had the correct information on it. I just would comment, and I've lived close to Augie for a long time, but everybody that lives close to Augie knows students, students move into a house, it doesn't take it long until their friends come to visit and their parents come to visit, and the noise increases in the area as well as there's not a parking place anywhere to be had. And traffic also increases. And it's my feeling, the purpose of zoning is so when you buy a house, if you buy it in single-family, you know it's going to continue to be single-family. You don't expect it to be rezoned something else. And, you know, at the last meeting I was at, there were several people from Augie here, and they made it out to be that every Augie student is perfect. And there are a lot of nice Augie students, but it appears to all of us, it's the choice of their president not to live in the president's house close to the Augie students. I mean, I don't know where he lives, but I know he doesn't live in the president's house. And so that kind of says they're not all perfect. And I guess that's kind of it.
Lois, thank you for coming up. And I kind of goofed up. I should have asked for the petitioner to come up first. And I got a little bit out of order there, but we'll invite the petitioner up now, and maybe he can answer the question about the phone number for you.
I have a question for Lois first before. Lois, do you know, this house, is it a single-family now or is it a rental unit?
I think at least one of them is rental.
Right.
And, you know, I was just by the house the other night, and somebody came out, and I think it was rental to college students. And, you know, at least this lady's impression was it's not a great bunch of college students.
So Lois, you know, though, that when a house is, an area is zoned single-family, somebody can take it from a family-owned to a rental, and there's no change in zoning required. And so, again, you don't really have control over all of how that works. It can be a rental regardless if it's a rental to, from an Augustana to one of their students, or if it's just somebody who turns a house into a rental for...
That's true, but if you're single-family, they can only have three unrelated people in them, which can make a big difference.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this issue with us this evening? Jeff, if you'd come back up for a second, I guess I misunderstood. You're the petitioner, the city is the petitioner on this?
No. The petitioner is Augustana for it's the conditional use for the theme home, but we supply the signs. So anybody in the audience tonight that says that they saw the signs, those are supplied by the City of Sioux Falls. So there's orange signs, there's blue signs, there's the yellow signs. Those are supplied by the City of Sioux Falls. They have our phone number on it, 367-8888.
And these signs are pre-made out and given to the people?
Correct. I mean, on the way home, I will stop by and look at this address and see what phone number is on that sign.
Okay, thank you. Would you, oh, item number eleven. The chair would entertain a motion on item number eleven. Well, I think it would just explain to me that the petitioner...
Oh, he's here.
Oh, the petitioner is here. Is the petitioner here for this particular item?
He's over here.
Okay.
Sorry, Kent, I was hiding in the corner.
Well, sorry, I'm a little confused. I spent the day down at the Omaha Zoo with two grandchildren, and I'm feeling the effects of that.
You're a brave man. Frank Hughes, Augustana College.
Would there be any questions for Frank? Frank, we had visited before. These are pretty supervised rental units. In other words, the students have to fill out an application.
Correct, yes.
This is put on your campus security route?
Correct.
If there were to be issues or problems, the report goes to you.
It would go to campus safety.
It'd go to campus safety, but you or someone in your office follows up on that?
Correct.
And if there is an issue, that housing can be taken away from those students, if I'm not mistaken?
That is a distinct possibility, yes. And I don't know if we covered it last time, but I think the question came up tonight. You know, what were these houses rentals prior to being purchased by Augustana College? And the answer to both addresses is yes. Both were rental homes before being purchased by Augustana. And I can't speak to who was living there prior to us purchasing them, but they were both rental units. They were not single-family homes.
I think the sensitivity to Lois and some of the other neighbors that showed up last time were the number of people that could live there. In number eleven, is that a three-bedroom, four-bedroom home? How many students do you have planned for that particular house?
It's a four-bedroom home, and our plan is to put four students there.
Four students in there?
And that's the case in both addresses.
Both addresses?
Both are, our plans are for four students at each location.
Thank you, Frank. Would there be any other questions for Frank?
Frank, and you do have parking for, up to four cars. As I look at the plan, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Frank, I think you can sit down.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address item number eleven? If not, the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make motion to approve item number eleven.
We have a motion. Would there be a second?
Anderson will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Item twelve is a conditional use in the S Institutional District to allow student housing. This one is at 1826 South Grange. As you just heard, it's a four-bedroom house to house four students, rented out by Augustana, and it was moved from the regular agenda to the consent agenda. Questions again, but it's the same application, just a different address, so we handle them
Would the petitioner, is the petitioner here? We'll get this in the right order this time, Frank. Is there anything you'd like to add to staff's report?
Frank Hughes, Augustana College. You know, this one doesn't have a parking pad in the back like the other house. There is not an alley associated with this property, but we do have a two-car garage in front and a very large parking pad in front of the garage. So again, the parking is just as adequate as the other location. That's really the main difference between the two.
Thank you, Frank. Any questions for Frank? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address item number twelve? Seeing none, chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item twelve and require...
We have a motion. Would there be a second?
Second by assertion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item number twelve? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? We will now go to item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen is a rezoning request. This is at Second Street and North Kiwanis Avenue. It's on the southwest corner of this intersection. The rezoning request is to go from the existing zoning of O Office District to I1 Light Industrial District. The applicant is the property owner. We've had at least two calls to our office. Russ has received one, and I've received one. The calls are in opposition. They're coming from the residential properties to the north. And as we've discussed with the property owners to the north when they've called, they're not so concerned about even the use as proposed to us, but the proposal itself is just to go to I Industrial, and they feel that they thought there was going to be a transition here. Planning and zoning continues to talk about as their transitions. In our staff report, we talked about there can be appropriate transitions with light industrial, with landscaping and parking. That's what the neighborhood concern is. So not even so much the use, but where are land use transition? So that's their opposition. They're not seeing this transition. So it's a reasonable request when they're raising their concerns. The site is less than one acre. The front yard setback for this property is required to be 25 feet on building lines for both streets. The proposal at this point, again, but you can't hold them to the proposal because at this point it's not a conditional use, it's a rezoning request. But the proposal is for an 11,000-square-foot warehouse with a 3,000-square-foot office, which would require only 10 parking spaces. There'd be a total of 24 parking spaces shown on the plan with a loading dock on the southwest corner of the building. The building location is on the north front of the yard, and the north side has the parking area. The landscaping plan has, is based on the street frontage, and a total of nine trees would be required on the front setback, and the plan indicates nine trees. One of the issues that the applicant is continuing to work with the city on is in regards to traffic engineering. The applicant has worked with engineering on locating the access on Second Avenue. At this point, engineering is not allowing any access to Kiwanis Avenue. Planning Commission has addressed this and looked at this in the past. The applicant's aware of this, that we restrict access to arterial streets. They would prefer their access to be to collectors. That's something that the neighborhood has issues with also. They would prefer the access to be to the arterial and not onto their residential street. But that's a conflict that we, as the city, also have. As you can see from the exhibit, we're asking the traffic to go to the north and not to the east. Buffers and land use transitions are required, and we're looking for those in any transitions. The site development concept plan indicates buffering of the residential neighborhood by the building itself from the loading and the parking activity. The plan does not indicate truck parking or outdoor storage that would suggest heavy traffic, noise, or visual impacts. Based upon the things that we've seen and the concept plan, we believe it's a reasonable approach to the light industrial uses, and we've recommended approval of this rezoning
Commissioners, would there be any questions for Jeff?
Mr. Chair, Jeff, since this is less than an acre, and I can't recall the exact situation where this becomes a conditional use permit...
There would not be a conditional use permit required in this.
Thank you.
Jeff, did staff think about encouraging this gentleman to do a conditional use permit? Has he got a specific idea or plan?
Applicant?
The applicant?
He wouldn't be able to do, as he's proposed, the use, and he does, I believe he does have a use available. He couldn't do it in the existing zoning classification, so he had to rezone it. So this is a yes or no proposition. He either rezones it, or he can't have the use there. Again, the applicant is here.
And we'll talk to him. It talks about special information. The applicant stated their repeated efforts to market an office use for the property have failed. Is that a particularly good reason to go from office next to residential to I1?
It's not a land use decision from your standpoint, no.
If we changed the zoning, what would it open it up to? What all can be put on an I1? It's less than an acre. They wouldn't need to come back for a conditional use permit. And that's my reason for asking. Does he have something specific that the neighbors could look at? And could that have been done through a conditional use?
No.
Yes to your first question, no to your second question. Yes, he has something specific that he wants to put on this site. No, it does not require a conditional use. No, he could not show them a conditional use because there's no such thing as a conditional use for this site, for this use. For the more intensive uses in an I-1 district, he could, or would be required to have a conditional use. But for warehousing in the I-1, you don't need a conditional use. There's a full slate, and again, I don't have them memorized, of all the types of uses. Russ probably has them all memorized.
I know he does.
But warehouse distribution, the light industrial types of uses are allowed in, in, in I-1 district. So again, that's kind of how we looked at it.
Jeff, is the rest of the block zoned industrial?
I think Russ is going back to the zoning district. This is the zoning map for everybody in attendance and out there watching on TV. The light blue is the light industrial. The darker blue that's circled is O Office, and then the orange, maybe on TV it looks brown, is residential. So the majority of it is industrial, but as you go north, it starts to turn into residential. This is the break. And that's kind of what the neighbors are going, you know, we're not opposed to warehouse. It, it doesn't, but, you know, we got industrial right next to our residential. I mean, they both make good sense. The applicant's trying to get a warehouse that's really not going to have a lot of impacts, but the neighbors are going, where, where's the office? That's why we're having a public hearing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? Would the petitioner be here?
Good evening, Lanny Oringer, Innovative Design. What Jeff has said really says it all, but it's, it's somewhat difficult to understand in the fact that can, if, if office would allow us to do a conditional use for the particular use that we're looking for, we would very much oblige that. Or if we could turn this parcel into a planned development so that we would have restrictions on us, so we could explain to you, this is exactly what it is that we want to build, we would do that as well. But the, the way the zoning laws are written right now, it does not allow us to do that. So we've had these discussions back and forth in, in trying to make sure that what we're, what we're going to tell you we are planning to do is actually what we do actually construct. We don't want to do this, we're going to zone it I-1 because we're telling you we're going to do this quasi-office warehouse building, and then turn around and change it to something other than that. That's not our intentions at all. It's just that the, your guys' rules or the city's rules don't let us do what would really probably be the most appropriate. Um, I will say that we, we did send out a letter, we did have a neighborhood meeting. We sent it out to the residents within 300 feet, based on the information that was provided by the city of Sioux Falls. Only two neighbors showed up. They happen to be the neighbors that are directly to the north of the property, and they didn't have any oppositions. We explained to them what it is that we're intending to do. And we have five other buildings in the same area that have essentially the same use that have been there for anywhere from 30 to the last 15 years. And we've been a good neighbor all those years. I know that there's concern about traffic on West Second. So we did attempt, we put an application into the city engineering office for access onto Kiwanis Avenue rather than on the Second Avenue, and that was rejected because of the things that Jeff had indicated previously. The use is actually going to be for one of the existing tenants in the building that's directly to the south of where we're proposing building this. They're essentially outgrowing their space and need a little bit more. It is a, a electrical, I'll call it a city desk. Contractors pull up in their vans and they go get some outlets, they get some conduit, things to that nature. It's not a heavy industrial use at all. We, we do show on our plan that the entire north setback will be landscaped and landscaped nicely to provide that, that buffer as much as we can there. Um, and we have purposely put the, all the parking in between our buildings to screen that from the residences on the north.
Would there be any questions, Commissioners of Lanny? Thank you for some of that clarification, Lanny.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Would there be anyone here that would like to address item number 19? Watch, 18, excuse me, 18.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Eric Hall. I live on the corner of Madison and Hudson. And, um, from what I understand from talking to some of the other neighbors, is that, that area would have been a buffer zone of one-story office buildings? Because there is a lot of debris that, you know, some of, that blows into the yards from some of those industrial buildings. Also, you know, my home is on the corner of Madison and Hudson, and I'm concerned that a lot of trucks will be coming down Hudson to pull into the driveway. Where semi necessarily, if they're dropping off supplies, wouldn't necessarily be able to turn on Second and be able to maneuver into that drive for that loading dock. You know, it's already a busy corner as it is, and I'd hate to see it be busier. You know, I have children, there's a few children that live on the street. You know? So, I mean, I, from my understanding, there would have been that buffer of the office complexes to kind of keep us some separation between the industrial park and, you know, our community over there.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Hang on just a second. Would anyone have any questions of Eric?
All right.
No questions, young fellow?
Thank you.
Would there be anyone else here this evening that would like to address item number 18?
Hi, my name's Cheryl Bushy, and I live almost across the street from where they're proposing to build that. We were under the impression it was going to be one-story office buildings and not something like this. The, the truck traffic concerns me because I have a daycare on that corner. And, you know, as hard as you try, sometimes children will get away from their parents. And the gentleman's right, there would be increased truck traffic on that road. The road's not equipped for that, it's not wide enough for it either. Uh, and the garbage that flows from over there, we get threatened with tickets if we don't pick up the garbage from them. So, you know, it, it's really not fair to us that they increase over there when they weren't supposed to, to begin with. I guess that's it, just, I pretty much agree with what the other guy said.
Okay, Cheryl, hang on just a second. Would there be any questions for Cheryl?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, darling.
Cheryl, what corner did you say you lived at?
I live in the corner that is directly across the street from, I live on Hudson, but it's right there on the corner.
Hudson and West Second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Would there be anyone else here this evening that'd like to address item number 18? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, could I have staff come up for a second, please? I got one more question for them.
Yes, you may.
Hudson, is there any way to put no truck traffic on that?
No.
Signs up for that one? So that they don't turn off of Madison?
Sure, my head, no, and I'll state, no, there's no way to state that there's no truck traffic on Second. The applicants were-
Not on Second, on, on Hudson.
On Hudson?
So they don't turn off of Madison? Because what, one gentleman was concerned that they were going to come, the semis were going to come off of Madison, turn on Hudson because it's a direct shot into that driveway. So is there a way that there would be no truck traffic on Hudson, not on Second?
You may be able to sign it, you would never be able to enforce it.
Right. Well, you, if there was truck traffic on it, and if the police happened to catch them, they could cite them?
Possibly.
Okay.
It's a local street, and we do have weight limits on streets, and so we'd have to check to see how Hudson was built and what it's designed for. I could check that, but I wouldn't be able to confirm it tonight.
Okay.
Yep.
Jeff, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Could it be a two-story office building that went there?
Yes, it could be. Um, Russ, do you know off the top of your head what the height limit is in that one? 35.
So it could be two-story?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Jeff. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, for the, uh-
Hold on bef, I think Lanny wanted to comment on. Come on up, Lanny. So, yeah, sorry. If you want to come up and comment, that'd be great.
Thank you. And, and you know, I fully acknowledge the concern and can appreciate the concern for the truck traffic, and that is specifically why we attempted to get the access off of Kiwanis Avenue rather than Second. What I can tell you is the, the five buildings that you see on the screen there are all owned by the same party. And we do have truck traffic that comes down Third, and it accesses all of those buildings either off of Third or off of the one access that's on Kiwanis Avenue. And obviously, that's what, how we would encourage any additional traffic that comes in there is to use, if it's truck traffic, to use Third and be able to maneuver through the site to that one loading dock. The, the tenant that we're anticipating building this for, it's not like they have very frequent trucks come in. I would speculate that if they had a couple of them a week, that would be a lot. Because they are essentially a supplier for smaller contractors that bring their vans, pickups, small cube van-type vehicles in.
Thank you, Lanny. Would anyone else care to address item, Eric or Cheryl? We've given Lanny a couple of opportunities. If either one of you would like to speak again, you're more than welcome. Oh, come on up here.
What I'm having difficulty understanding is if the problem would be solved by granting him access from Kiwanis, why can't we do that? I feel that that would solve everyone's problem, and the community wouldn't complain as much. The building would be there, and we wouldn't have the traffic on, on those smaller streets, and they can come straight in through Kiwanis. So, I mean, if that's what he needs to make everyone happy, I think we should have tried to allow him to have that access from Kiwanis.
Thank you, Eric. Jeff, come on up here for a second. Would this, would this be the Department of Transportation that has act control?
This would be engineering, Public Works Engineering. They've already submitted their access permit, and they were denied. If they wanted to submit it again, they'd be denied. We have engineering design standards, which, again, you've had your presentation from Heath and the traffic engineering, it doesn't meet standards. You'd have traffic conflicts, and you have turning movement conflicts, and it doesn't meet our standards.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question of Jeff.
Oh, absolutely.
Based on what you just said, I'm sure it'll negate my question. But if the, the other warehouses are owned by the same owner, can there be a mutual access easement? So they don't have any entrance onto their site from Second, but they can use the access at Third for this building?
Just bring that, can there be? Yes, there can be, if there's cross easements through platted lots, we can't require that.
Okay. But that's an option for the owner, then?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments on item number 18? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, for the sake of discussion, I'll make the motion to approve the rezone, item number 18. Larson?
We have a motion, would there be a second?
Second to approve.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chair, uh, it's unfortunate, and I'm not sure if a new zoning code that's in the works right now would solve this. Probably would. So I understand where the applicant's frustration would be or is relative to working with the, the code, the zoning code that's in place. I, I really, based on my knowledge of that complex, don't have any significant problems with what's being proposed. Uh, I noticed too, in terms of the site plan, they could have easily backed this building up to the, building to the south and put all the parking facing Second, which I, I think would have been a poor idea. But, uh, many years ago, and likely before most of you were on this commission, we had a similar discussion, I believe, for the, what must have been the fourth building in this complex. And there was concern at that time about truck traffic through that neighborhood. I don't know if it increased or changed significantly, but I'm guessing most truckers will still come down Kiwanis and, and if I were driving a truck in here, I'd probably come in off Kiwanis, going south in Kiwanis. So anyway, I'm going to support this, this rezone.
Commissioner Lars, I would concur with what you've said. I travel this stretch frequently, and, again, they could have made it less, probably easier on themselves to move, to locate the building to the other side. But I think, you know, it fits the look. All the rest of those buildings blend very nicely together, and, and I'm assuming that Lanny would do the same with this one. You know, oftentimes, when we look at an empty lot for a long time, we get used to looking at that. And, and I can appreciate that there's going to be some change and maybe some inconveniences compared to what they're used to. But it's a pretty low-use industrial business that's in there. And so I would support this rezone as well.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 19.
I think item number 19 is in the south-central part of town. There's four residential lots that are being requested to be rezoned from RD Residential to C2 General Commercial Districts. It's approximately a half acre of land. So even though it's four lots, it's a regu- relatively small site. It's C2 to the west, as you can see on this exhibit, and it's RD to the east. There does have some compatibility issues. This is a, a very typical exhibit to what we just saw in the previous one, where you look at it from the zoning standpoint, and you go, there may be some issues, but it can be done correctly if they are good applicants and they design the property correctly. The applicant's proposing to rezone the property for expanding the existing building that's to the west and constructing additional parking as required. Again, the property to the west is ACE hardware. They've been in the neighborhood for a while, and they would like to extend their existing building. The concept plan they have indicates a total of 135 parking spaces required, and they're going to be, have 152 spaces provided for a total building size of 32,000, 37,800 square feet. This is a 12,000-square-foot building addition being planned on the east side of the building. Staff is recommending that additional landscaping be planned along the east side of the parking lot, along with a proposed fence to provide better screening of residential property. Again, Planning Commission's well aware, but maybe not the citizens, that we can't require them with the condition, with the rezoning to do that screening. But we would recommend they do that and design it right. Again, I've already stated it's a half-acre site, so it's not an acre. When they have a one-acre site, they're required to do a conditional use. This is a half acre, they're going to rezone it. They're able to come in and do a building permit, they do a site plan. They'd be required to do the proper lighting, the proper parking requirements, and the minimum requirements for landscaping, but it would not require a conditional use. Staff is recommending approval with this rezoning request based upon transitions, again, along Minnesota Avenue. We know the applicant did have a neighborhood meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions of Jeff? Thank you. Uh, would, is the petitioner here?
Kevin Nyberg, 330 West 41st Street. And I'm willing to answer any questions the Commission would have. commission would have in regards to the rezone.
Mr. Nyberg, how did your neighborhood meeting go? I know Jeff said you had one. How did it go?
Yeah, we had eight residents turn out to the meeting, really no opposition at all. You know, I have to tell you, we've started acquiring lots in this neighborhood back in 1976 with the hopes of a expansion someday. And I think, I really think we've been good neighbors, and I made that point clear to them. I think the plan... Russ, if you can turn back. When you look at the plan, I think a lot of you have been on the commission for a while. We're used to planting trees on our property, especially at our west location, and we would do the same here. I love this plan because I think it's very neighborhood-friendly when you look at the driveway that's in the upper northeast corner. We're shifting that opposite of our exit onto 41st Street, which hopefully will allow less traffic moving through our lot and actually safer for our customers and safer for the neighborhood. The fence along the side will be a nice quality, nice-looking resin fence, and we've talked to the neighbor about all of this, and they just had no concerns.
Thank you.
Kevin, how long have you guys been at this location?
Nineteen sixty-nine.
Thank you.
And actually, I will tell you a quick story, that my dad always said that he was the first retail establishment to commit to buy property on 41st Street.
Good enough.
And you know what's happened since then.
Any other questions for Kevin? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would there be anyone in the audience that would like to address item number nineteen? Seeing none? Chair would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, move for approval of item nineteen. Cursion.
We have a motion?
Yes, bar, second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number twenty.
Staff's recommending deferral on item number twenty. Is there anybody here for item number twenty? Staff recommends deferral.
Staff, would I take a motion and a second of voter?
Yes. The previous chairperson thinks that's a great idea, and I agree.
Chair would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to defer item twenty. Larson.
Schmidt, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number twenty-one.
Item number twenty-one, we're asking for withdrawal on... Is there anyone here for item number twenty-one on Weber Avenue? We discussed this with the applicant. She understood that we were requesting withdrawal on this item, but she did not submit her withdrawal request, and as we discussed yesterday. So please make a motion to withdraw this item.
Would any commissioners care to make that motion?
I'll make a motion for withdrawal of item number twenty-one. Schmidt.
I will second. Herb?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-one is withdrawn. Number twenty-two.
Item number twenty-two is to a conditional use to allow a daycare center. It's on the southwest part of town. It's for Lot Seven. It's a RD Residential District. As you can see in the zoning exhibit that Russ has up on the screen, to the east, the gray area, is a commercial district in Platinum Valley. To the west, the orange area is RD, and then further to the west, in the yellow, is RS2 Single Family District. The aerial map that we have up on the screen right now, they're proposing on the blocked area to have a playground for the daycare center. To the east, which isn't blocked out because we've previously dealt with this issue, the building is where the daycare center is. That's already been approved. There's a daycare center, but they need additional land, where we've blocked it off, for the playground for the daycare center, for the daycare playground, excuse me. Bright Eyes Daycare is proposing to start a daycare center in the existing Platinum Corporate Center II building on South Louise Avenue and to locate the center's playground on the subject property. When you look at a conditional use for a daycare center, the most important criteria for this conditional use is that a safe, healthy environment for the person is of the primary importance. Daycare centers and family daycares shall be located in areas where an adequate and safe playground with sufficient green areas can be provided, where safe access to the use is available, and in areas where such uses will be convenient for their clients. Again, this is on Witski Avenue, on South Louise Avenue and Seventy-seventh Street. The proposed daycare playground is accessible only to staff and clients from the east through the daycare center building. The applicant's site plan indicates the RD Residential setbacks, which would be that they'd have a fenced-area playground with a 25-foot front yard setback and rear yard setback, along with five-foot side yard setbacks. The applicant states that the center has a capacity within the building for 140 children and has 25 full and part-time staff. They'd be open for business from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, and they have a tentative opening date for 2012. Not all children will be on the playground at the same time. The applicant will be here this evening to be able to talk about the supervision on the playground and the children during the playground. Staff is recommending approval of this conditional use with, at this point, three conditions. The conditions that we have are that the applicant shall remit their authorization from the city health department, that they're approved daycare. Number two is that even though you're approving a childcare center, that the condition is that the playground on Lot Seven is accessory to Lot 5B. Therefore, Lot Seven is not to become the primary daycare center facility. It will always be this Lot Seven will just remain accessory to the primary use. So that helped at least justify a little bit to the neighbors, that the west lot is accessory, the east lot is primary. And then the third condition is to combine the tax parcels for ownership for the construction of the playground. So again, they're still tied together. That ends staff report.
Questions of staff?
There are neighbors here, and they may even be able to speak about the blue signs that were posted on the property.
Jeff, I do have a question, just to be sure in my mind. This lot would be an accessory use to the daycare. For whatever reasons, the daycare goes away.
Yes.
That lot is still an RD lot.
Correct. Still zoned RD. And then they can't come in and put a daycare center on this RD lot because it's accessory to the property to the east. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions for Jeff?
Mr. Chair, Jeff, can you tell me the lots to the north and to the south of this proposed... What's on those?
They're zoned RD, and they're being built as twin homes.
So on either side of this, there'll be a twin home?
Correct.
And then there'll be...
Oh, hang on, everybody.
We'll give you a second, just a second here.
They're building residential units to the north and to the south.
Okay.
And I think the citizens want to speak to this.
Clearly. Okay. So it's not as it looks right now, where it's all...
No, they're currently building the units right now. Yes.
Clarification.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here?
Good evening. My name is Mandy Peterson, and my husband Nathan and I are the owners of Bright Eyes Daycare coming soon to Seventy-seventh and Louise. First, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, to first thank the planning staff for recommending approval for our conditional use permit. When we were researching potential locations for Bright Eyes Daycare, we found that the South Louise area is currently lacking sufficient daycare centers to meet the current demand. When we called daycare centers in that area to inquire about openings, we discovered a nine-month waiting list for all age groups, infant through preschool. As you probably know, this area of Sioux Falls continues to grow both commercially and residentially, which is another reason why we thought it would be the ideal location for a top-quality daycare. In preparation for this review, we mailed invitations for a Q&amp;A meeting to the same 19 households that the city did, so that we could introduce ourselves and our business plans while also answering questions from the neighbors. The concerns that came out of this meeting mainly were traffic, noise, and aesthetics. We'd like to take this opportunity to address those concerns again for those who either couldn't make that neighborhood meeting or just help reassure those who did make it. The first concern was increased traffic. Our actual daycare center facility itself, as Jeff said, is located at 6909 South Louise, which is already zoned and approved for our purpose. The reason we're here tonight is to discuss the conditional use permit to allow the vacant property directly behind the daycare center to be used as the children's playground. Even though this vacant land is located on Witski, we'd like to reassure our neighbors that the placement of our playground will in no way increase traffic, nor will it be used for parking on Witski. This playground will have no access for the parents to drop off or pick up children from Witski. Instead, the parents have to, well, will be required to go through the front door of our daycare center located on South Louise Avenue. This represents not only our efforts to keep traffic away from Witski, but also represents our efforts to protecting the safety of our children by requiring their parents to use key card security access from the front door. Noise as a result of children playing in the playground was also a concern that was brought up at that meeting. State regulations require at least 50 square feet per child in an outdoor playground. Even though our daycare is approved by the state for 140 children, 20 of them will be infants, 20 mobile infants, 20 toddlers, and the remaining are preschool-aged children. The 20 infants I mentioned will actually not be using the playground at all, but the rest of the children, weather and season permitting, will use the playground in smaller groups based on our daycare's activity schedule. Additionally, we've taken further consideration for our neighbors on Witski by limiting the use of the playground to the hours between 8:30 a.m. and 5:30 p.m., and we're only open Monday through Friday. So please keep in mind, the playground will not be used this entire time. Instead, we have blocks of times reserved in the morning before lunch and nap, and then again in the afternoon after nap. Our daycare is also preschool. Therefore, while we're teaching preschool, the children, again, will be indoors. Our daycare facility is an amazing 6,400 square feet for indoor education and interactive play, which we'll be taking full advantage of. So while the children are outside, they will be in small groups supervised by our education teachers as required by the state regulations. And finally, the concern about what the playground will look like was brought up at the neighborhood meeting. Again, we will be complying with regulations that have been laid out by the city, including installing a sidewalk, planting trees, and placing our fencing 25 feet back from the curb. Both my husband and I have very high standards, so in addition to the regulations, we'll be siding the playground, installing privacy cedar fencing where higher visibility fence is not required by the police, and even planting a vegetable garden to teach our children the importance of local agriculture. And we will continue to keep the playground impeccably maintained throughout the year. We hope that we have addressed your concerns as it pertains to the conditional use permit of the vacant lot on Witski, for which we'd like to use for our daycare's playground. At this time, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Would there be any questions of Mandy? And Nathan didn't say too much.
No, no. I'm just eye candy.
Would there be any questions of the petitioner? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to address item twenty-two?
Hi, Glenn Foster, 1905 South Evans, Sioux Falls. I own the two lots, just in the north that are adjacent to the proposed area. I guess we've been back, just in April, we were down here, when I requested to do some construction on those two lots. I made concessions on the buildings that I would build on the conditional use permit, on reducing the number of bedrooms and the number of people and increasing the parking to accommodate not only the city's requirements of the problems they were having with the neighbors, but to make sure that it kept in line with the building and being single-family dwellings and residential over here. I guess I got a problem with the fact that, you know, I own the two lots in the north, and I put extra costs in trying to make everybody happy across the street with their concerns in taking the bedrooms down in the townhomes in that building, and now we're going to throw a daycare playground right there next to my property. And what the city agreed last time was the last two lots would remain as twin home lots, and that was kind of the consensus that we had last time and back in 2008. I think this has been rehashed a couple of times, is that both times we agreed that those two lots remained twin homes. And I purchased the other two. We're constructing on those. I don't know what's going to happen on the next two. But to me, it's more of like a transitional zoning problem, where we have commercial here, and we got some townhomes or twin homes, and then it's going into single-family as it goes to the west. I think it needs to remain that way. As far as land use, it needs to probably stay over on the other side of the road where it should be. I don't know what else to, I guess, to say about it, but that's my opposition about it, is I don't think it fits. I don't think it fits. It's all twin homes and multifamily coming down the street, and then we're going to have a fence and playground equipment right in the middle, and then the last lot, you know, is going to be another townhome, or I think it's more, it fits more suit. It will be like maybe a fourplex and then a duplex or twin home as it goes to the south into the Platinum Valley III, where there is more multifamily as it goes to the south, so.
Glenn, help my memory. What was your difficulty when you bought those two lots? I honestly can't remember.
Well, the neighbors had problems with the fourplexes to the north, with the parking and some of the traffic, and the fact that they bought these lots based on the fact that the ones across the street where we're at were supposed to remain twin home. And they started making multifamily or fourplexes, and then I continued with concessions that I wouldn't put three-bedroom units on the property. I would only put two-bedroom units, and I would increase my parking, so that we'd decrease the amount of cars on the street and in the driveways and have adequate spaces for garbage cans and receptacles inside the units. That was kind of what we came up with, just April, two and a half months ago.
Wasn't that long ago? I can't believe I can't remember it, but was this not zoned RD? This was zoned for twin home, but you wanted to put in fourplexes?
Well, on the west side, it's already twin homes, and on the east side of Witski, it's four fourplexes, they're actually townhomes, coming down. Then I bought the next two lots to the south of those four. And then I continued those as townhomes to sell with the concessions of the conditions that we would keep them two-bedroom units and all three-bedroom units, and we would make the parking, we increased the parking by 40% and reduced the bedrooms by four in each unit.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Glenn?
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Luann Decker. I really don't know very much about conditional use permits, but I am very sure about this. Three years ago, we built a beautiful twin home on Witski Avenue. It's our retirement home and our dream, and at that time, we were promised that there would be twin homes built directly across the street from us. We were promised. Now, Bob and I are old enough to know that a promise doesn't necessarily mean the same thing to everyone, so we went to the city just to make sure. And sure enough, those lots were zoned for twin homes. And sure enough, those lots were zoned for twin homes. But now we are here, because there is a possibility, when I look out my front door, instead of looking directly into a very well-lanched, beautiful twin home, just like ours, we could be looking directly into and listening to a children's playground with a six-foot-high chain link fence. Now, that doesn't seem right. Somehow, something is very wrong here, and I don't understand it at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Luanne. Would there be any questions for Luanne?
Hi, my name is Lois Sears-Arnt, and I live at sixty-eight oh-one Whitski Avenue. And in two thousand and eight, we built our retirement twin home also in the same place. And for the last years, from two thousand to two thousand and twelve, they've been promising us that across the street would only be twin homes. Now, we, the undersigned, request that the Sioux Falls Planning Committee uphold these promises given to us by the developers when we purchased ours, that there would only be twin homes across the street. I have a copy of some of the people who have signed this petition that could not be here tonight. So we are all together on this project against, we're not against daycare, we're not against children, but it does not fit. It really doesn't. And I'll ask you one other thing. Please go out to that area and look at the traffic pattern there's going to be trying to get off where they're parking. It's awful. It just will not hold all those cars. I thank you for your time and for listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lois. Would there be any questions for Lois? Thank you, Lois.
Do you want to make a statement?
Well, hang on just a second now.
The traffic area she's talking about, or the parking she's talking about, is not the conditional use in question. This is actually the daycare center, and we're talking about the yard itself. So I just wanted to clear that up for the folks in the audience.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to address this issue? Thank you, Jeff.
My name is John Timmer. I live at seventy-one hundred South Whitski Place. We live in Platinum Valley Townhouse Association, which is just south of Seventy-seventh Street, and is looking directly north into this affected area. Before I do that, I wanted to say thanks to you folks, because I know what big pay you get for serving here. We got a little bit more in the legislature when I was there, but it wasn't much, and we didn't get any retirement plan either. But in this group we have here, you folks have about thirty-three, thirty-four years of service between you, and this will be your last year because of term limits. But it shows we've got people who are willing in the community to work. They're willing to be involved, because we're doing it for the good of the city. A few years ago, I was here on a subject very similar to this, and one of our problems then was the notification process of rezoning. And some small signs had been printed, and nobody saw it because of a snowstorm. And this committee and the city commission changed the rules, and those rules were perfect this time, Jeff, in that the letter that goes out was the notification to the people within that area. The signs that were put up were still lousy. They were so small, we could hardly see them. And the contractor, he had to be, he was building right there at the time, and he's got dirt piled around him, he's got machinery setting around him, and three-fourths of the people would have never known that was rezoning if we hadn't had the letter notification process. And I think it's been terrific, and I hope we can continue to improve notification process, because when people can be involved and start understanding the process, we're all way better off. I want to compliment the planning department, too. They are always accessible when I go there for questions. They won't always tell me what I want to hear, and they won't tell me some things I'd wish they would, but they listen, and they talk, and they tell you what is going on. Mandy and Nathan, I compliment you on wanting to be entrepreneurs and wanting to get into business. Oh, I better turn here. You guys got to get a better sound system for us deaf people.
There's a survey I want you to fill out on your way out today, Jeff.
But you're not going to get many prospects from the group that's here opposing you, because most of us are a little bit too old to be thinking about having children in daycare. But there's also a right place and a right time to do certain things, and there's also wrong places to be doing certain things. And that's why we are here. Dunham did a fantastic job of developing that whole area originally. He had fantastic success in selling Platinum Valley Townhouse Association. We have seventy-six units there, and I think we are considered, if not the best, one of the best in the whole city of Sioux Falls for associations. That runs from Seventy-seventh to Eightieth Street. Our Platinum Valley runs from Seventy-seventh, that was from Seventy-fourth to Eightieth, our Platinum Valley runs just south of that, from Seventy-seventh to Eightieth, and there's no exit there, which can cause a little more of a traffic problem again when traffic is moving there. As was said to you by some other people here, salespeople, when selling these lots, all told they were twin homes, and across the street would be twin homes. Our problem is, some of the people didn't understand that that zoning process that was there yesterday may be gone tomorrow. You found out, or you're trying, they're trying to find out, not to help you necessarily, because when the zoning or conditional use changes things, it totally changes the value of those lots. But what happens, even though they plotted it all for twin homes, and people were told they would be twin homes, and a developer on the west side who owned that and developed some of those lots told us three years ago, when we agreed to go to fourplexes toward the west side going north on Whitski Place, that we would not fight him on it anymore if he would guarantee us that the first two lots would be twin home and he would not change it. And he guaranteed us that, but of course, what good is a guarantee? All I say, was this a breach of faith? Dunham knows that the lots on that side were all supposed to be twin home, and yet whoever is making this sale to these kids here, your kids because you're so old, probably didn't tell them at the time. I don't know. Is this a breach of faith by contractors? I think Kerry Shaw is the one person who is at fault here. He promised us they would stay twin lots, twin homes. He promised us he would have trees in by the end of that year, and that's been four years ago, and we still have no trees. And so I think we've got some problems going on. Health department concerns that I have, the building exit, do you have a draft of the building on the?
John, as much as I like to visit and listen to you, I'm going to try to hold this to about five minutes or so, so everybody has a chance to come up, so.
Have I used two?
Well, you're using two peoples up now.
But have I used two minutes already?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'll try to summarize this, if I may. The exit out of the daycare building in the southwest corner goes across an alley, a street that must stay open, and it goes into the daycare center with no gates on it except in that one corner. They cannot put a cattle fence across, so the kids always stay within that frame, and it is, if you did anything for a barrier, it would cause a problem for the fire department and a cause for, a problem for garbage trucks. I was told this afternoon that some people, most people are not aware of any, of any day, playground that isn't attached to the daycare center, and there's direct access to that playground without going across an open alley street. The parking thing, in spite of your reasoning for not having it here and not being talked about here, I feel we, I should say one the word, if it's for the protection of children that are in that daycare when they're leaving, then I think that that place and fire should be approving the egress from that parking lot onto Seventy-seventh Street, which is a nightmare. I'll stop there. Summary, a great idea to have a daycare center in that area someplace, in spite of the YWCA having one that'll be larger, that has one that's larger than you. With a Vera going as big as they are, there's going to be lots more daycare needs, but don't be surprised if a Vera builds one there themselves, and then you would have a problem. I'd say, these people who stood up, and I'd like to have them stand, who, everybody here from Platinum Valley, would you just stand? These are the people, both north and south of Seventy-seventh Street, and there isn't a single one. We went to the meeting they held, and they put on a good little presentation on what they're going to do, as they did to you, but there wasn't a single person that I was aware of there that is in favor of this. Lot of these people have spent their life getting ready to have a retirement home, and they weren't expecting to have a hundred and forty kids in a playground across the street. We think this needs further study, and actually, I feel it should be declined. Thank you very much.
John, thank you.
Any questions?
No, you've got me looking at that, but I'll probably ask staff about that, about that driveway around the back of that. It appears to me there's a twelve-foot garage access road, and I'm just wondering if it runs the whole length of that block.
No, it does not.
Does not.
It goes to the building just south, which is the FDIC Building, Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation. It goes just to the edge there, does not encroach on the Seventy-seventh Street, and it has to be there because that's where they have their garbage pickup.
Do you know how far it runs to the north, John?
To the north, it goes all the way to the bank.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for John?
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here that would like to address this? John took a lot of your guys' time.
I'm Gloria Scott, a former elementary teacher, so I like children. But there will be residential on each side of this playground, and the playground will be within ten to fifteen feet. So if there's a twin home built beside this, and if it appears to be the same type as across the street, their bedroom window in the twin home would be about ten to fifteen feet away from children playing, and I know the excitement can get pretty loud. So it just isn't a good place for a playground for children. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up, Gloria. Is there anyone else who'd like to?
I am Shelley Logan, and I will be the program coordinator at Bright Eyes, and I would just like to just kind of give a thought. If a twin home does go there, my children go to a home daycare that's in a residential area, and I tell you what, she's got, she can have twelve kids out there at a time in her backyard between those same hours, so I'm just saying if a twin home does go there and is open up to a home daycare, those other residentials may be looking at children playing outside in their backyard for a home daycare. So I just wanted to put that thought there. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you. My name is Mike Houck. I am the commercial broker that's been working with Nate and Mandy in the process of trying to find a location for this business. And I just wanted to point out, we've had some comments that, you know, this isn't the right place, and I just wanted to point out that it's been a pretty difficult process to try to find a place for a daycare. There are a lot of regulations from the state and the city, and we looked at a lot of different buildings, and we tried coming up with a lot of different ways to make it work, and office buildings are generally not built with big green spaces by them. Developers develop the land and they build the building. So it's been difficult to find a space that would work, and this space with the green area behind it, that's dirt, that will remain dirt, provides an alternative in an area of town where there's a need for this type of a business. And I wanted to get to that point, too, that there's talk that this would be twin homes and promises, I don't know what promises may or may not have been made. The fact of the matter is, is that this is not a rezone. Those lots are staying with the same zoning. They are dirt today, they will be dirt if the conditional use permit is approved. There'll just be kids on the dirt. It, no different. The zoning is not being changed. This is an allowed use with conditions for that type of zoning, and that's simply all that these folks are asking for. Now, I heard some of the objections or the opponents. Glenn had talked about his lots to the north, and can certainly appreciate that he went through some pains to try to satisfy concerns, and that's great, but it's a distinction. That is property where, A, there is property, there are buildings being built on that that were actual construction, not just leaving it dirt. Secondly, those properties are going to access Whitski Avenue and would have traffic and that type of thing there. This daycare, because security is obviously a very big concern for any daycare when people's children are there, the access has got to be through the front, and that front is, of course, on Louise Avenue and Arterial Street, same street the Empire Mall is on. It's going to be commercial. The street system is set up the way it is. Their Seventy-seventh is a collector's street. It's designed to handle a lot more cars, I think, probably than it's handling today, because we do expect a lot of growth in that area. But that's really a red herring. This, the conditional use permit is not about the traffic. The traffic is what it is. The conditional use is about the lot that's zoned with the residential, and that zoning isn't changing. And there, when we're talking about that, I want to just emphasize, as Jeff mentioned originally, what is the conditional use permit standard? Why are we here today? Why is there a requirement that we get a conditional use for a bare lot when it's an included use? And as it states, it is all of the requirements. It's a safe, healthy environment for the person. It is an adequate and safe playground, sufficient green areas, and access and convenience for the clients. The conditional use permit is required. We are required to be here to make sure that children are protected. And I appreciate that the neighbors may not have anticipated this, and that's understandable. I can understand their concern. But the fact of the matter is, the owner of this property has a tenant who wants to lease it, and I wanted to clarify that, it's not a sale, it's a lease. And the developer is willing to develop this building to do that, and it's their property, and this is an allowed use, and it's, there are some comments about value of the property. Value is in the eye of the beholder. If it's a young family in that neighborhood, they might find it a lot more valuable to have a daycare around, particularly a high-class one that I know that the petitioners here would do. Particularly a high-class one that I know that the petitioners here would do. And I guess that's it. I'd be happy to answer any other questions. As, one of the, one last comment just on the twin home deal, as Jeff stated, if the daycare were ever to close, or something, if it went out of business, or, that, that lot is still zoned for twin homes. It's not being allowed to do commercial, it's simply the accessory use.
Michael, hang on just a second. Michael? Mike? Come on up for a minute. Would there be any questions for Mike?
Meredith.
Mr. Chair, Mike, looking at this site plan, it suggests that there's a six-foot cedar fence on the north and south property lines running east-west. And also a six-foot-high cedar fence along the back property line.
Chain link.
Well, but then it says chain link on, on the section of fence that is on the west side, just back 25 foot. Who's providing those cedar fences?
My understanding, and perhaps the petitioners who have worked on that can address that better, or the developer, but my understanding is that the chain link fence was required by the police department or, or some type of regulatory body, because they want to be able to see the children in that playground area. And I'll, I'll defer to others who may have more direct knowledge of that.
Okay, so the, do the cedar fence, does the cedar fence exist now?
No.
Would that be constructed as a part of the development?
I believe that that would have to be constructed as part of that, the developer, that's all included in the package.
I was just curious as to why cedar on three sides and just the one side, but you've clarified that. Thank you.
Michael, before you sit down, when you look at this site, there's, there is a 12-foot driveway easement behind this building that gets you from the building to this site. Although the traffic starts, stops on the south there, was there any concern on your part or your client's part in regards to any traffic on that?
If there was a fire, and there was a fire truck coming down there for fire use, I suppose that would be it, but they're probably be evacuating the kids at that point anyway. And the only other use of that is for garbage, where the garbage trucks have to come in and empty the dumpsters, and that's done just on a weekly basis. And the children will always be accompanied by a teacher or adult supervision as they're making that ingress and egress into the playground area.
Okay. Not an issue in your mind?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions for Michael? Thank you, Mike. Anyone else that'd like to speak to? Good gosh, what item are we on? Twenty-two.
My name's Gary Scott. I live at 7,000 South Whitsky Place, directly south of the intended site that we've been discussing. When Gloria and I were looking at this property in 2003, of course, we were concerned about what would be across the street, because we live right next to Seventy-seventh Street. So it weighed heavily in our buying decision to know that that was twin homes. We thought that, that fits well with what we planned, and so based on that, we proceeded to buy the property and have really enjoyed it. And I must say that we're very protective of our quality of life that we enjoy down there. As we look across the street now, and I guess I look at that space, and I think, now if that playground's up there one lot north, who in their right mind would even want to build something there? And secondly, who would want to buy it if they did? I don't, I think it is detrimental to the property value. And by the same token, as I sit there each morning, I got a bird's eye view of the traffic situation, and I can tell you between 7:30 and 10 minutes to 8:00, there's usually traffic backed up past our kitchen window to the west, right to the next intersection and sometimes beyond. And when I think of the, that's the morning, and then when I think about what could happen in the evening, when the dance studio students are coming in and it's pickup time for the daycare people, I know we're not supposed to be talking about traffic, but let's face it, it's a factor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Gary. Is anyone else that'd like to address this issue? Yeah, briefly, Glenn.
Again, Glenn Foster. We were just down this road in April, just two and a half months ago, and, I mean, they're all under the same impression that I am, is that the, what we came down with the decision that we're going to be, remain twin home. I know he's saying the lots are still zoned RD, and that's fine, but the use is going to be commercial, and it's commercial in a residential area. You'll be driving down that street, and you got twin homes and townhomes, and then you got a fenced-off lot in the middle of nowhere. I know another argument was the fact that, you know, you could put a single-family house there and, and have a daycare with 12 kids. Well, 12 kids is a lot different than 140, you know? And just like the guy, I'd like to reiterate, who's going to buy a property right next to this? I mean, I got to try to sell a property, too, that I just went through in April to make these townhomes under a conditional use permit, and now I got to try to sell and have a daycare center right next to me. And they might be there, you know, a year, they might be there 10, but how am I going to sell anything?
Thank you, Glenn.
And, you know, based on what we did just in April, if I knew this was going to, I wouldn't have bought the lots and I wouldn't have built on them. No, so that's all I wanted to say. If you got any questions, I'll take them right now.
Any questions for Glenn?
I know I had my minute and a half, but I just wanted to let you know that she's talking about people moving in with children. We're retired people over there in twin homes. So I don't see that we're going to get this big family moving next door to twin homes and a daycare.
Thank you, Gloria. Jeff, could you step up to here for just a second?
Certainly.
What is the rule on daycares for individuals in a residential neighborhood? What, what are the rules?
Can you restate that differently?
Can somebody open a daycare in their home?
Yes. Home daycare isn't allowed, and again, if you look at the zoning map, RS is single-family, RD is single-family. Daycares are allowed in that neighborhood. If you look at the bigger Platinum Valley neighborhood, there's an elementary school in this neighborhood. It's zoned residential. There's a park in this neighborhood. It's zoned residential. People that go to churches, those are zoned residential. Assisted living centers, senior daycares, those are all zoned residential.
If someone wanted to start a daycare in their home?
Yep.
They'd have to get permitted by?
Health.
Health, city, and state, or just city?
For a home daycare? For a home daycare, they don't have to get a license from the city, they just basically get the state license.
State license.
Yep. If they get a family daycare, which zero to six is the home number of people that they take care of. Zero to six is the home daycare, seven to 12 is the family daycare. Seven to 12, then we require them to get licensed with the health department and the state.
Would they have to come in for a conditional use for either zero to six or six to 12?
From the seven to 12 standpoint, the process that we go through from a land use standpoint, again, if you have seven to 12 children in your home at a home daycare, family daycare, they can do a conditional use, or a lot of times, they get a petition signed by their property in the area. If they get the petition signed, then they don't go through the public hearing process.
Thank you. Clearing that up for me. Thank you. Boy, we've had a, some awfully good discussion and dialogue this evening. Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, again, as I've done in the past, I'd make the motion to approve the conditional use permit for the sake of discussion.
I will second, Schmidt.
We have a motion, and we have a second discussion.
I'll start this one. I recognize that this is an allowed use in this area, and daycares come up on our agenda regularly. Neighborhood daycares, as you're providing or intending to provide, family daycares, and unfortunately, they normally bring a lot of discussion. And it is unfortunate, because we all need them. And the Planning Commission has a history of supporting daycares in a variety of neighborhoods. However, this is a unique situation here, where we have the playground as an, really an accessory to the commercial facility. And I do feel that as a land use, it will impact the land use differently than, than I think was intended by the zoning. And having said that, I don't think I can support this petition.
Appreciate that. Anyone else like to comment on this particular item, commissioners? It seems to me, how many times have, have we heard about, I was promised this and I was promised that? And I don't know where that takes that curve, but there's no question in my mind, I, I'm sure some of these people called and checked the zoning before they built or bought there. Yeah, can zoning change? As we all know, we, we do it here, can conditional uses be provided? We do it on a fairly regular basis, but it just seems the last couple of years, we've had so many issues with this being, people being promised something, and, and I don't know what the answer for these folks are for something like that, other than to get it in writing, I guess.
Well, you know, Kenny, it's not a change, though, in the zoning. They're not coming for a request for a rezone. You know, the zoning is still the same, and I think that's what needs to be clarified as well. Your zoning's not changing out there. This is a conditional use permit. And so what they were promised and what's still going to be there, that's the same. That hasn't changed. And it's an allowed use in that area. That's, that's what's changing. And Meredith, you can maybe clarify it better than I can.
No, you're exactly right. The zoning doesn't change. It's, it's just a conditional use that is different from what the neighbors were told. And Kenny, I've heard that the landowners, the property owners, come before this commission for longer than anyone, and I don't know what you can do about the promises piece, because as a board, we're only here to react to land use issues, not traffic, not drainage, all these things that are also issues, but not under our purview, so. I also agree with Jesse, there's a tremendous need for daycare facilities. I, I don't, in my mind, think that this is, considering the hours that the daycare would operate and the supervision, that this would be a carnival atmosphere in that neighborhood. I really don't see that happening, and so.
Thank you, Meredith. Anyone else have some comments? Andy, Steve, you guys got anything you want to say?
No, it's been said. It's, we, we have to look at, as Meredith just said, and Jesse just reiterated and has reiterated before, as this is a land use. Is this an appropriate land use for this piece of, of property? And, and does it meet all the conditions, which it does?
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Schmidt, no.
Anderson, no.
Schmidt and Anderson, no. Motion passes. Thank you, folks, for all of your, your time and. Oh, golly, let's see. That was item number 22. Let's move on to item number 23, Jeff. If you want to wait just a second, we'll.
Councilmember Jamison's a glutton for punishment, because he's going to see if we can go past 10 o'clock again tonight.
Say that again?
Nothing, Kenny. He heard me. Item number 23 is a conditional use permit on West 10th Street. This conditional use permit has been before this body in the past and has gone to city council in the past. This gets a little confusing, but as we briefed Planning Commission the other day, if you can bear with me. This conditional use is for a motor vehicle sales and display facility. The motor vehicle and sales facility is to continue to operate with service. That is what the conditional use request is to do, is to allow it to have automobile service. It is not to allow it to have automobile repair, automobile body, or automobile paint. The applicant understands that, that's what the commission request is in front of you for, and that's what it is described as in your report. There is a difference between motor vehicle sales displays and rental. It says that they can be able to do service to those sales vehicles. And then there's also the aspect in the definitions of motor vehicle repair, which talks about parts thereof and the rebuilding and overhauling of engines and transmissions. They are not able to do repair, body, and paint within this facility. This applicant's in front of you today with six conditions to go ahead with their auto sales that's currently operating there, and to continue to be able to do service with this facility. Staff is recommending approval to add this service facility. With the six conditions, the six conditions are that no more than 10 vehicles to be displayed on site at one time, no parking allowed within 10-foot required setbacks or in the intersection safety zone. There shall be no sales and display vehicle parking along 10th Street. There should be no vacuuming or detailing of vehicles outdoors. Per city inspection, any findings of auto repair or auto body on site will initiate a revocation hearing of the conditional use. They shall replace dead trees per landscaping inspection of the approved site plan to be completed by the end of August 31st, 2012. And they should move the existing bumper blocks outside of the required front yard setback. This ends the staff report.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
Mr. Schmidt, were these, these were the same conditions we put on before, other than we had one more with, that said no vehicle repair, correct?
Close, yes. We also previously had a different date for the landscaping, and we had required them to remove the lift. I think we called it the lift, correct, Dave?
Right. Removal electrical source.
Correct. But otherwise, it's the same conditions, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I would ask, is the petitioner here?
Caffey, Hello, Beredell, 4809 East Mayo Drive.
Would you have anything you'd like to add to staffs? Let's see if there's any questions. Would there be any questions for the petitioner?
Uh, yes. Now, you are aware of these stipulations. It says no more than 10 vehicles. How many vehicles do you have out there now?
Display area, maybe like 10.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that, because I drive by it all the time, and there's a lot more than 10 cars parked out there. I just want you to be aware that this says 10 vehicles displayed. Okay? You're, you're, you understand that part of the stipulation?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here that'd like to address item number 23? If not, I would look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve item 23 with the six stipulations.
We have a motion. Would there be a second?
Anderson will second.
Anderson, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Good luck to you. Item number 24.
Item number 24 is at 4201 and 4203 East Brookline Drive. It's It's an existing residential twin home. The request is for a minor amendment to Subarea B of Summer Hill South Plan Development District to reduce the corner front yard setback from 20 feet to 18 and a half feet. Again, this is an existing constructed residential twin home. The purpose is to approve the setback reduction as constructed. They are required to have a 20-foot setback. They constructed it at 18 and a half. They could have gone forward and got a variance request, or we could have addressed it administratively if it was only a foot. But since it's a foot and a half, it has to come before this body. We posted, the applicant posted the signs. We have not heard any issues. The applicant's here to hear any comments or questions from you, as well as to explain the process.
Thank you, Jeff. Would the petitioner, here?
Hello, Brady Hyde with Empire Homes, 9105 West 32nd Street. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Brady? Meredith?
Brady, do you have a brother named Blake?
I do.
I was wondering, what's your fallback plan if we turn this down tonight?
I don't have a good one. It's constructed almost probably two weeks from completion. I guess the only thing I would say to that is, I believe this happens a lot more, a lot more often than anyone would probably like to admit. We were made aware of the problem and elected to go about it this way instead of passing it on to a future homeowner at some point, so here we are.
Any other questions for Brady? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to address item number 24? Seeing no, seeing no one, I would look for commission action?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve assertion.
We have a motion to approve. Would there be a second?
Second, Gaspar.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
It'd be hard to have him tear down his house for a foot and a half.
Really only...
Six inches.
Yeah. And I think he's right. I think it probably happens more than we think it does.
Mr. Chair, I think it's an indication of the quality of surveyors, civil engineers in this community.
I'll be sure and tell my husband that when I go home.
Thank you for pointing that out, Meredith. Would there be any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Brady, go and send no more. Item number...
Your poor baby's dying.
25.
Good evening. Adam Roach with the Community Development Department. I will be presenting items 25, 26, and 27 together as they all pertain to the Woody Heights project. Item 25 is for informational only. Items 26 and 27 are both resolutions, but require separate action and will need to be voted on individually. Start off with item 25 is the Woody Heights concerted redevelopment plan. The concerted plan is an economic development tool and defined by the state as a locally approved revitalization plan targeting specific areas of the community for housing and economic development. According to the state, the plan must identify a specific type of residential development to occur that eliminates blight or underutilization of the subject area. As this property has been vacant for quite some time, we looked through the Pulk directories and could not find any sort of use on it. What is this plan used for? It's not part of a qualified census tract. That's why this plan was developed to make it required, or to make it qualified for a boost from the South Dakota Housing Development, the South Dakota Housing Development Authority as per Section, as per Section 42 of the IRS Code. The project also needs to demonstrate to the state that it must have the boost to be feasible and to receive a portion of it. Are there any questions on this concerted plan? This plan also does provide specific guidelines for the built environment, such as housing designs, rec veneer, et cetera, to make it aesthetically pleasing. Does plan would then go on to the council?
Given us an informational now on item 25...
Correct, sir.
When you're complete with that, I'll ask to have that accepted, and then we'll move on to Jeff.
Sounds good.
Number 26.
Item number 26 and 27 is the approval of the project boundary for tax increment finance district number 16, and approval of the project plan for tax, the tax increment finance district number 16. The proposed project is located in the Woody Heights neighborhood, just east of North Cliff Avenue, north of East First Street, and west of the Leaders Edition, just right off Tricia Lane there. Proposed construction is approximately 80 three-and-four bedroom, single-family, rent-owned, affordable homes. Homes will feature a double garage and all the amenities that you expect with new construction. The project is anticipated to break ground in November this year, and with a completion date of fall of 24, I'm sorry, fall of 2014. The current land value is approximately $258,000. Proposed improvements made to the property will increase the value to approximately $12 million. The developer is requesting $1.85 million in tax increment financing of the eligible $2,44,000 for a term of 15 years to relieve costs associated with extensive dirt work, noise mitigation from adjacent railroad, and removal of an old railroad berm to provide connectivity to adjacent neighborhoods there on the south end. The proposed plan and boundary complies with state statutes. The notification was made to the county and to the school district with no objection to proposal. Many of the components of this plan, of this development, I should say, are supported by the 2035 Shaped Sioux Falls Plan, Comprehensive Plan. Some of those components are ensuring safe, clean, and affordable housing options for the residents of Sioux Falls, focus on revitalizing and stabilizing the core of our neighborhood. The location of development is in proximity to major employment hubs, kind of hitting the sustainability aspect, and the rezoning of outdated land uses, if you want to go back to the land use. There is some I-1 and I-2 adjacent to all these residential neighborhoods. So it would be more compatible and more conducive to the environment. And also the utilization of economic development tools for neighborhood conservation, and all these items can be found in the Shaped Foundations chapter. It also adheres to the 2010 housing study that has identified a need for rental market units, and that's where they see that pent-up demand exists. And one reason for the pent-up demand is a lot of the affordable housing within the city of Sioux Falls is meeting its contractual obligations, and they will be converted back to conventional rental housing. And the Dunham Development Team and Community Development Staff are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Adam, thank you. That's a nice presentation. When I look at this map where it says I-1, I-2 RD, that's all going to go away, and that's all going to be residential.
The applicant would go through with a rezone to RS2.
Would there be any questions for Adam, guys?
Adam, do you see this opening the door for other groups to want TIF for residential areas?
It could open up the door, yes. But the TIF is not for the building of the homes. It is for the extensive site work.
Do you see it as something that's going to, in a year or two or three, cause a number of developers farther out outskirts of town to say, "We'd like to TIF this area and develop roads"? And is that something that community development is going to entertain, or is this going to be the way it is because it's such a hard-to-develop area?
This is a very difficult area to develop with the challenging terrain, and there could be, there is exposed bedrock that has been identified by a previous study. This is a, if you were to go walk on the site, I mean, the terrain goes about 70 feet in different spots. There are some massive hills. There's some really sandy spots, and there are also some exposed bedrock as well. So it is very challenging. It's 29 acres in the core of our city that we really want to see redeveloped for the sustainability aspect, the affordable housing, et cetera.
So you wouldn't see coming back for a TIF for residential in other areas this is being done because it's so hard to develop?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for Adam? Adam, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nice presentation. Would there be anyone here that would like to comment on item 25, 26, or 27?
Todd Meyer Henry, 315 South Phillips. I'm the attorney for Dunham Companies, and I'm here to answer any questions. To supplement the answer that you just received, Brookings, Aberdeen have used TIFs in order to get affordable housing. And so, other than difficult terrain or filling in large holes in communities that you want to develop, if a time came that Sioux Falls was having problems with affordable housing, you may see a TIF request if it's affordable. These homes in 15 years are purchasable for $150,000 to $160,000. But to think about it, that's $77,000 to $75,000 today, if you put that in account at inflation using past 15 years. So that's what, if we, if this was 15 years from now, those folks would be buying the house for $77,000 in today's dollars. So it's very affordable. This meets all the criteria of blight. We have homeless that are living in boxes, so I assume that's affordable housing for them, but it will upscale the neighborhood, so to speak. Other than that, the zoning, or the Planning Commission is part of the TIF process. They recommend the boundaries and send up the plan, and it gives the public two shots at a public hearing to discuss the proposed TIF. And the city council actually has the power to, within their discretion, create it or not.
Todd, thank you for some of that information. Would there be any questions for Todd?
I have a question. What if somebody says, "I just want to buy it now and not rent to own for 15 years"?
Well, this is a, this will not occur but for South Dakota Housing and some of their incentives. There's some tax credits and some bonds and this TIF process. And they have conditions that will be right into the building of these homes. They can't purchase it right now. It's leased for 15 years, and whoever's at the end of the 15 years who's in the house, they have, they have the opportunity to purchase it. And if they purchase it, they have to then live in that house for five years. And if they sell it prior to that time, then they have to pay back a calculated portion of the incentive South Dakota Housing provided.
So explain to me how, for a low-income person that can afford a $77,000 house, how this is an advantage to them to pay $150,000 15 years later?
How is what? The rent is also subsidized, and it's lower. So they're going to get into this house most likely for less than a mortgage payment to buy the house brand-new. And in the 15th year, they'll pay it off or refinance it, and their payment will be less throughout the whole period than if they bought this house, which will be between $155,000 and $160,000. It'll be a lot less than the actual payment for that whole term. So that's how we get individuals into these homes. And they go through training and all the processes that South Dakota Housing have getting folks into these homes.
I'm still not figuring the math, but I'll go...
Well, we have tax-exempt interest that finances, tax-exempt bonds that will finance the first 15 years. So we're not at a taxable rate, a mortgage rate. And we also have some tax credits that go into the financing of the homes. So the buyout at the end is, here, Don, you want to come and explain? Don's the money guy.
If this gets approved and we get it approved through South Dakota Housing, oh, Don Dunham, 230 South Phillips Avenue. I just live four houses north of the Millionaire, so I thought I'd throw that in. That young fellow, when he had that measurement problem, I remember when that happened to you a few years ago. We said... Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. Going to give you a hard time about that. But no, we did the first one 15 years ago. It was called Homestead Trails. It's actually about a mile exactly east of this, and it's on 229 and Rice Street.
Yep, I know exactly where you're at.
Yeah, and we recently put those on the market, and in January, we started selling them to the people that live in them. Right now, we've got 29 of them under contract or closed with the buyers already, and we've got three left. And two of those are the handicap units that we're selling to a non-for-profit, and the other, the other one is a lady. Unfortunately, it's going to move out the end of this month, and then we've got to clean it up so that we can get it resold. And we've got three or four buyers buying for that. So the program's worked very well. It is restricted by the, by South Dakota Housing Authority on the income limits. They can't, moving in, they can't, they have to, can't make more than 60% of the median income on some of them and 50% on other units. And they're, I think, I don't know what it is, 12 or 14, can't be higher than 50% of the median income in Sioux Falls, and the other can't be higher than 60%. But once they move in, because they have the opportunity to buy this home, they could start making a million dollars after they moved in, and they could never be kicked out. But the, so, I mean, it's, it's a well-regulated program, but during that time, that 15 years, we have to audit everybody every year, and we have to get it certified by South Dakota Housing Authority. So, I mean, it's a very well-regulated program.
But your question was...
Oh, what was the question?
My question is, how is it affordable when you rent it for 15 years and you buy it for twice the price?
I wanted to correct Todd on that, too. At the end of the 15 years, the three-bedroom, two-bath homes, they were, they will, they can buy those for $105,000, and the four-bedroom, two-bath homes, they can buy those for $110,000. And then, like I said, they get, the rents are also set by HUD and South Dakota Housing Authority, so they're subsidized rents for 15 years. So that's how they're affordable.
Subsidized, and that's paid off at the end.
Well, in fact, in Homestead Trails, because we only spent $73,000 to build those 15 years ago, we said we'd sell them for $60,000. Most of those homes have appraised over $120,000 on sale. So I think that's a good indication that they got some darn good equity while they were living there. Well done. That's almost too much information for us. We feel a little overloaded.
Sorry, Kenny.
Any other questions for Don and Todd? Thank you, fellas. Anyone else here that'd like to address items 25, 26, or 27? If not, I think I would look for commission action on 25, and I think that, I think that just, no, don't have to do and accept. Then let's move to 26. Would entertain a motion regarding number 26.
Anderson will make a motion to approve item number 26.
Motion from Anderson to approve? Would there be a second?
Second, Decoyer.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, you know, I struggle with this one since it's residential, but, and I understand the affordable housing need. I'm not sure, in the future, I could support a TIF for any residential that it was going to be, just because it was affordable housing, but I understand the nature of this land and how hard it is to develop, and I think that's appropriate for a TIF. So I can support this one.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment. Any other comments? Any other discussion? All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Item number 26 passes. Chair would entertain a motion on item number 27.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve item number 27 assertion.
Gaspar, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Item 27 passes. Staff? Staff, item number 28. David's back. Hi, Dave.
Yes, sir. Good, good evening, Mr. Chair. I am David Loveland with the Community Development Department, here to present item number 28, which is a final development plan in Subarea A of the Sioux Falls Plaza Plan Development District to begin construction of the event center. The applicant is the City of Sioux Falls and Jeff Hazard with Coke Hazard Architects, who is here this evening and is able to answer questions. The owner, of course, is the City of Sioux Falls. General location is Northwestern Avenue and West Russell Street. The area of the complex in total is just under 36 acres. The existing land use of the specific area of the event center is for parking, and then to the north, on a budding zoning and land uses, to the north is C4 Plan Commercial and O Office across Russell Avenue. To the south is C4 Plan Commercial and C2 General Commercial for Retail Trade, and to the east is the C4 Plan Commercial with a hotel and an office with office buildings, and to the west is the S Institutional District, which is the School District Services, and the RD Residential District with residential uses. The Sioux Falls Plaza Plan Development District was created in order to allow a community complex composed of athletic fields, arenas, convention centers, and other large-scale community facilities. In December of 2011, the Planning Commission recommended approval of a major amendment in order to allow an event center and additional land uses within the planned development district. The city council will then approve that request in January of 2012. So the applicable regulations for this facility are the Subarea A Regulations of the Sioux Falls Plaza PD. Getting into the land use and comprehensive plan analysis, the subject property is currently home to the arena, convention center, Howard Wood Field, and the Sioux Falls Stadium. The proposed event center complements and enhances the existing uses, and once completed, the final, or, excuse me, that's a typo in that report, sorry. The final designs for the event center are available to you, to the public in 2012, and Jeff Hazard can speak a little bit to that. In November 2011, the citizens of Sioux Falls voted in favor of constructing the proposed event center at the subject location. Design work has been underway since that time, with initial site preparation slated to begin at the end of July in 2012. The event center is estimated to be opened by fall of 2014. So because the application conforms to the 2035 Shaped Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan will provide a needed community entertainment asset and was approved by public vote in November 2011, staff is recommending approval of the final development plan with two conditions. The first is that the master landscape plan to be approved by the planning director and designee, and the master sign plan. And the second is that the master sign plan to be, also to be approved by the planning director or his designee. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone have any questions for David? If not, the petitioner on this one is the City of Sioux Falls. Was that you?
Yes, in conjunction with a team of design experts, Jeff Hazard is available to answer any questions you have on those.
All right. If anyone, is there anyone here this evening that would like to address item number 28?
Jeff Hazard, Coke Hazard Architects, 431 North Phillips. I think Dave did a great job explaining the project. I don't have a lot to add to it. I'm pleased to be able to say that we're on schedule and we're on budget. We have finished the design of the building and are in the process of working through pricing with the construction manager, Mortenson Construction, and when I think we get a few additional details resolved, we will be able to confidently say that we're on budget, and the thing will be under construction in the next few weeks.
I hope you can say we're on budget in 2014.
Well, I think once, even the, I think once we get through this process of sorting through all of the numbers and sort of the, you know, the design elements, I don't really think there's going to be much doubt about that.
Mr. Chair, Jeff looks good. It's exciting.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? Jeff, thank you for coming down tonight.
Thanks.
Would there be anyone else here that would like to address item number 28? If not, Chair would entertain a motion. Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the final development plan with the two conditions. Larson? We have a motion. Would there be a second?
Second by assertion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're at the end of a very long evening tonight, guys. Thanks for all the hard work.
Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation that we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Would there be a second?
Gaspar.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? We're adjourned.